Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was easy. Now I have to give this back.
I had them all.
Any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Larry.
Nomination for Larry Grove, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. It's funny, I don't remember your name. Thought you was Larry. It's going to be awkward. All in favor of Larry as Vice Chair? I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And Vice Chair. Superintendent's recommendation for clerk, deputy clerk, and superintendent. Designating me.
Yes, sir. We would like to recommend Amy Rogers to be the new clerk. As deputy clerk, we'd like to appoint Ms. Brian Prentz.
And as superintendent's designating, continuation of Carol Johnson.
Right. We have to accept those in motion hours. Do we? Do we accept those in motion? I think we have.
We have to do something, otherwise we're in the...
We have in the past that conversation.
Well, I think we have. Right? So, is there a motion to affirm the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
The motion. Second, Mr. Rubin. Second, Mr. Grove. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. And so ordered. MBGS representative. Somebody was going to have to arm wrestle Larry to get that away from him, right? Do we concur?
Yeah.
We concur? We all concur?
Yeah.
Thank you, Larry, for doing that. I don't think we have to vote on that one. I don't think so. And headwaters, representative and alternate.
I would be willing to...
I'm a headwaters.
Headwaters. So we have two headwaters people. Who wants to be the alternate?
Me.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, so this bottom would be our headwater representative. And Ms. Meyer will be our alternate.
Okay.
Good? Great.
As an alter, you still have to go to the meeting. Your input is important.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on a second. All right. 2018 meeting schedule. Is that in our... That's in our... Oh, it's in the text.
Yep, it is.
So, I'm sorry, I have to open it up.
You have a hard... Is there a hard copy of that someplace?
I do.
Then I can go stick it on my calendar. I'll get it later.
I had a friend of mine that went to... Because his son is a boy scout, went to the Prince William County School Board meeting so his son could witness, you know, Robert Truman's war, right? A meeting. He said they were there for 45 minutes. And all they were doing was figuring out their officers. They never even got to the business while they were there. It took them that long.
Oh, wow.
To figure out...
They have committees of...
They had a lot of...
He said it was painful. Anyway, thankful we're in a small place. Small county. Things are not simple. So we've all had a chance to see then this schedule for all of our regular board meetings, which all start at 6:30 PM on the second Tuesday of every month of the year. Is there any questions or comments? The things that are here are all of the special budget meetings, which are part of this budget calendar.
Right.
These are the regular meetings. And hearings that we have to do when it's budget time. Is there a motion to accept the calendar?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.
It's a school board calendar for the notes of the minute.
School calendar.
Not the school calendar.
School board calendar.
Just a school board meeting calendar.
Meeting calendar.
Right.
It's just the school board meetings.
Yeah. It's just the regular school.
I know that. I can write that down.
Oh, okay.
I thought there was one that was...
All right. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens, and there's time for public comment prior to any action items which are on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure that our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the boards review. The moderator will also ask you to conclude your remarks as the time elapses. If you have any questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Grove. Second, Mr. Rubin. Is any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the agenda is adopted. We have the approval of a student representative. So that be...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the board table this until next month. We had some weather and holiday break, and we have a new process for the application of the student rep that we'd like to try out, so it may take a little bit longer. So if we could table that till February.
Great. Donations.
Okay, I'm going to ask the superintendent to put the list of donations up on the screen because it's 30 that was donated for our holiday party. And so I wasn't going to read the whole list, but...
Thank you.
Okay, great.
There were a lot.
And then if you'll scroll down a little bit further, but I do have one on the donation form that you're used to seeing, and it's from Henry Wood, and it's a cash donation in the amount of $1,000, and that's for varsity baseball.
Wow.
Varsity baseball.
For uniforms?
It just says varsity baseball, so...
Could be anything.
That was nice.
That's right.
We'll get the... We'll get that last part of the batting cage.
Batting cage.
Oh, yeah.
But as you can see, we had a lot of donations within the county for our holiday, our employee holiday party, so it was really nice.
Very supportive.
Very nice.
All right, and we will accept with a letter of thanks those donations during the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of December 12?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Rubin. Second, Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. And so ordered. Verification of the bills that they were about to pay. Did you get a chance to come to this?
Yes, I did.
Yes. Any chance to review the bills?
I did. I reviewed the bills, and they were all in order.
Thank you very much.
Now they need to be paid.
Pay the bills. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Vinum. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We paid the bills. Information items, reports to superintendent.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Our first item is Rapp Tomorrow Read Today. We would like to give an update to you about how that program has been progressing. If you remember, last year, we started the concept of it as the care program for reading, and it has evolved since, and it's come a long way. So I'd like to ask Kevin Brandriff and David Schaefer to handle weekly to come up. But before we get started into the formal report, I'd also like Eve Bandry to come up, if you don't mind. This is a total surprise to her. She's not going to... Okay. Well, as we started getting going with this program and early reading outreach, we had a logo design contest, and Eve Bandry was our winner. So her logo, not only was it so impressive, she actually submitted two entries, and we liked them both so much that both of them were selected as the logo for the program, so both of them became the logo for our program and brochure. So we have a certificate for you for your winning the Rapp Tomorrow Read Today logo contest, and you get a brochure to see how your artwork was used, and it's going to be distributed everywhere.
Wonderful.
Take a picture with Eve. So here you go. I have to let her get back to play practice, but...
Thank you.
Great job.
Off she goes.
All right, I'll pull up your presentation.
When I had to make a book report, I was in eighth grade. Good evening. For the past few months, a group consisting of Mrs. Brimsley, David and Amanda from the Rapp Hannick Public Library, Diane Handy from our read program, and my wife, Marcy, who serves both as a member of the library board and my immediate supervisor at home. And I met to discuss ways to promote literacy in families with children who are not yet a school age. Reading is more than just a subject covered in the early part of a child's school years. It's a vital skill that often determines how far a student will go beyond their school years. If you go to the next slide, you'll see Dr. Seuss, the great philosopher. The more you read, the more things that you'll know. The more that you learn, the more places that you'll go. If you go to the next slide, Rawdon had another sin that is along with that. If you are going to get anywhere in life, you're going to have to read a lot of books. And I say that's absolutely true. And then the next slide, the one I really like. Reading is to your brain what water is to a tree. This quote from Terry Hall sums up the whole idea of why we consider it important. Without water, a tree will cease to grow and will begin to wither away. And without new information gathered through the written word, either reading yourself or being read to at a young age, a mind ceases to grow in several critical ways. You see from this slide, by the time a child is three or four, they can begin to predict how well they'll do in third, fourth grades, about eight or nine, which is about five years into the future. And at that point, they can begin to predict whether a student will graduate from high school, which is 10 years into the future. And as we know, there are plenty of stats out there to report the variance of income level between high school drop... A high school dropout, a high school graduate that doesn't go on to post-secondary, post-secondary graduate, and so forth. So the importance of reading, it just can't be understated. If you go to the next slide, sums it all. A child who reads will be a child who thinks. But how do we have children become readers? Do we need to hire more teachers and start school programs even earlier? Are we going to need to find more space for classrooms? I can see the school board getting nervous there because they're starting to give money here. The good thing is, no. The best teachers are already recruited, and the classroom space is sufficient. We don't need to recommend anything like that. We don't need to create new programs, find classroom space, hire new teachers, or create anything like that. The best qualified people are already brought on board, and the classroom space needed is already available. And you can see why. Children are made readers on the laps of their parents. So the classroom space they need is right on their parents' lap, and the person who needs to teach them is their parents. And we can also add grandparents to that, aunts, uncles, older cousins, and in my family's case, and other families, I'm sure, older siblings. Move to the next one. This slide asks an important question. Why do we read aloud to children? As we can look at the graph, and we see the answers starting with brain development, the different reasons why, different things that reading aloud does for young children. Unfortunately, I can't see it from this level, but you can read it from that point. Children are... When they're read to, their brains develop in the way they're supposed to, their language skills start to develop. They begin to... They have a good bonding experience with their parents, and they develop a love of reading, one of many things. And the next slide. And this brings up several points why it's important to read for children to be read to at home. Even 20 minutes of reading can make a huge difference. It says the difference of income levels of someone who is illiterate compared to someone who's able to read. And most important, the one I liked on the lower part of the schoolhouse, is the difference between how much time they spend in school and how much time they spend at home. So if you're thinking from a teacher perspective, there's a whole lot of instruction time that can happen at home. So it's a really good place for them to be able to learn reading skills. We go to the next slide. This is the feeling that I would have, not being a teacher myself. Wait, I'm not a teacher. I don't know if I can do this. I might do it all wrong. For such an important job, it may seem like teachers, non-teachers like me, that there's a bigger job than we can handle. And there has to be some complicated way for us to be able to get those kind of outcomes. Parents may not feel like they're up to the task. But again, we go to Dr. Seuss saying, "You're never too old, never too wacky or wild to pick up a book and read to a child." Fortunately, it's not that complicated. And if you go to the next slide, anyone can read to a child. It's the quantity that's important, and the more you do it, the better the outcome. And this is the whole idea behind Rapp Tomorrow Read Today. It's a collaboration between the public schools, the public library, and with headwaters. And our first goal is to educate new parents in the importance of building vocabulary starting at birth, and providing the tools and support to parents as they begin building vocabulary and literacy. In the brochure that we handed to you, we have different sections on reasons for reading, which we've touched on already. There are suggestions on how to build early literacy on each stage of development in the pre-kindergarten years, and tips on reading aloud to your children. So with this brochure allowing you to start out, it gives you some tips to start out how to read to your child. Let's see what we got. There we go. And the next goal we have is we want to let parents know the program exists, and we want to... And that's the next step where we're going to be heading to now, now that we've created this new snazzy brochure. We're going to enlist healthcare and social service providers and provide pamphlets for them to give to their clients. We want this information to get out to parents of young children and to get parents... Get people that the parents already know and trust to let them know about Rapp Tomorrow Read Today. And then once we do that, we want to make it easy for parents to participate. Parents will find out from their doctors or social service providers about the program, and they'll perceive the brochure that you have, and they'll receive it from them and get an idea of what the program's about. The idea is we want to make it easy for parents to enroll without any added trips to other county offices or any other place that they need to go that they aren't already going to. The idea is to put this information in parents' hands in the times and places where the parents are already going to be, and continue to reach out to them to help out these new teachers that we're creating. Go to the next slide. The parents will be able to review the information, and if they're interested, they'll be able to complete the form that you'll see in the back of the brochure. We try to make the brochure interesting with a lot of pictures and with just enough information to get the important facts out there without overwhelming anyone. Parents can read it, decide that this is something that they want to do. Again, it's absolutely voluntary. We're not going to rauwbeat anybody to do this. It's totally voluntary. But if they do want to participate, they can complete the quick mini forms on the back and mail it to the school board office, which has the address provided. We haven't discussed it yet among us, but we can certainly think of other ways for them to be able to get that information to us. If they don't want to throw it in the mail, we'll find ways. Move to the next slide. Once the request gets to the school board office, we already have packets there ready for them to be able to be sent out. And the parents are going to get sent the first two books for them to read to their child, we'll put it through the mail, and plus material for them on reading to their child, which includes some of the things that I included with the brochure that I gave you. Some nice little snazzy visual sort of things for them to be able to see how important reading is at a very young age. And after we send that out, we'll check in with them by phone or email, just to make sure they received the materials, answer any questions that they may have. Again, still no pressure. And I'm going to ask David and Amanda if they could talk briefly about some of the choices we made on books and why they may have chosen them.
The library is very happy to participate in this, and we've already purchased all the books that we need to get it rolling and sustain it, I think, for some time. We're blessed with a very wonderful children's librarian, Amanda, and I think she can enlighten you on how the books were chosen for specific age groups and specific skills, and I'll leave it to you.
Hi, I'm Amanda. I'm the Youth Services Librarian. The titles were selected based on the ages and stages of development. For example, young babies may not know what pictures mean, they may not follow a story, but they'll like the bright colors, they like shapes, contrast, familiar things, faces. So we selected books based on those different ages and stages of development. And as children get older, they're able to focus more, both on pictures and on storylines. So as we ordered books for children as they get a little bit older, we kept that in mind and got things with a little bit more of a storyline rather than just pictures. And we also made sure that we got a bunch of sturdy books for the beginners, and then we moved on to some lift-the-flaps and touch-and-feels, things like that, that children can be interested in and interact with. The selections reflect the child's development through these ages and stages. We know that they may vary, but regardless, we're building a small library for these kids to get them interested in reading and build skills that they're going to need for the rest of their lives that's going to follow them. And we're just very happy to participate.
Okay, after that, I think we can go back to the next slide. There we go. After several weeks, new books will be sent out, and follow calls will be made again to make sure that they got the materials that they need, and any questions or problems that they may have or concerns. And then this will continue for a while, and we'll segue into read-to-me sessions that they have at the library, and we can do a cohort, get-togethers. So it becomes both educational and social. We want to make this a pleasant social activity as well as an educational endeavor, with the idea that if a parent and a child are both enjoying it, they'll be more likely to continue doing it. This is the part that we have not yet fully ironed out yet, because a lot of this is going to depend on how parents feel and what they want to do and how they want to progress from it. So we're kind of leaving this gray for now till we have a chance to get it rolling and find out what parents really would like to do with it. But most importantly, the children, through this part, the children are going to be introduced to reading and getting precious time with the adults in their lives. I don't think it's possible really to have an excessive level of parent and child time. Too often, it's the other way around. We see in some statistics saying that some of the progression that the children make in reading or whatever has a lot to do with how much time they get to spend in lab reading with a family member. So whatever direction the program continues, the important part is that parents are going to be introduced to early literacy strategies and be able to become a key player in the child education early on. We're going to build the reading habit, these kids. More likely that they are going to be able to continue to read independently as they grow up. They're going to... It's going to become a habit with them, kind of like it is with my younger one, and they'll get more into the habit of reading more often. And why does this really matter? Well, as you see from this slide, I love this quote. "The real purpose of books is to trap the mind into doing its own thinking." Goodness gracious, we all have kids that have to be able to do their own thinking if they read something. Being an active form of information acquisition, reading requires the reader to instantly reflect and draw conclusions from what they read. And this seems to bear out in the next slide, which basically says the more students read, the better they seem to do on standardized testing. And it doesn't say the reasons why. I have some... You know, my belief is that the more you read, the more you're exposed to different ideas, and the more you have to process those ideas and think about what those ideas mean and what you believe from them and what you take out of it. It's an interactive form of learning, so when you read, it makes you not just take information in, but also take something, leave something out from it. And we build a pool of knowledge for students. Without exposure to these new ideas and concepts, it's hard to have a deep well of information to draw from. In other words, we'll see again, a child who reads will be a child who thinks, which is after all the most important outcome of education, giving young people the tools they need to critically make sense of the world around them and to have a pool of knowledge deep enough to be productive members of society. By doing all that we can to ensure that children have the literacy skills that they need to succeed going into kindergarten, we can better ensure that our young people have the critical thinking skills and knowledge base to succeed once they leave Rapp Hannick County Public Schools. Thank you for your attention.
Questions? May I have any questions, boss?
So I think I missed a part of it. So when people sign up, are they receiving this literature, or are they actually receiving their own copies of books?
They're going to receive both. They're going to receive...
They receive...
The brochure they'll get when they go to their family doctor or social service. But when they return the little slip back to us, they're going to receive those bigger eight-and-a-half by 11 handouts with... In color, so they don't look as dull as they do there. And a copy of the books that Amanda showed you, so they'll be able to instantly start reading to their kids.
Yeah, so they'll get the books right away.
And these are books that they can keep at home?
These are books they keep at home. They're theirs to keep.
One... I love this. I think it's a fabulous way to go. One of the things that we found a long time ago is that kids with their own libraries learn to read very quickly. Kids without books in the house take a long time to learn to read. So if we can create libraries within a house, that's, to me, that's an important thing to do. I assume your headwaters will raise funds for that, I guess.
As much as we can.
We're all working together on this. We're all working together.
It's a great joint venture, by the way. It's great that we're a part of that.
We're happy to be part of it as well. We had to work with some great people, you know, putting this together. And always a pleasure working with Brimsley and...
Have you contacted pediatricians and so forth in Warrington and around in the area?
That's the idea, is to go over to pediatricians' offices in the area, social services, any other place that you can think of where parents are going to be, the parents of young children are going to be, who would be able to benefit from this. And by casting a wide net, the idea is that we won't miss people who would be able to use it otherwise. So if they look at it and decide this is not something that they need or want, that's fine, they move on. But if it's something that they're interested in, you know, just...
You could probably throw something on Facebook.
Yeah. We could definitely do an online option.
You know, anybody is expecting. Come on now.
Well, now that we're on social media.
Yeah.
We could probably do something on that angle.
That hits a lot of people, and especially if everybody shares it with everybody else. Goes a long way.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Reading Textbook Committee. I have the pleasure of introducing some very amazing reading experts, speaking of reading, that seemed like a theme tonight, which it kind of is. So Tiffany and Beth, if you'd like to take the podium and share with us about the textbook adoption process. Now, I will say, we are a year ahead of the cycle, and the reason for that is reading is usually the most comprehensive adoption that you go through. It takes a lot more research, a lot more input, and it can also be one of the more expensive adoptions. So by going a year ahead, we have the ability to use funds from this year's textbook line, next year's, and kind of combine that and be a little bit more frugal with our funding because it can get pretty expensive. And also, the state puts two subjects on us in one year. The English and the science go together, which is never nice because you have the reading in there, the English, the writing, and the science, which gets to be this huge amount of money when you look at that whole thing. So that's why we're a year ahead, and these ladies have done a great job with the process. So they have a presentation to update you about that. And I will pull it up. And I will pull it up.
I don't want to steal these ladies' thunder, but one of the signs of an effective school is when the administration is able to move beyond managing their staff to empowering teachers to be leaders. And I would like to say that both of these ladies have stepped up and met that challenge this year. They have served as teacher leaders for this textbook adoption committee. And they have done an excellent job. And they've created a lot of enthusiasm, interest, and motivation amongst the staff at the elementary school for the reading series. So I'm very pleased to be able to introduce them this evening. So Ms. Montague, you and Ms. Lee.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, I'm actually really glad we're following the last presentation because it's a great lead-in to what we're talking about. So Tiffany and I were given the task of looking at what we're currently using in our K through five classrooms and what our needs are going forward. So that's where we started. So the first thing that we wanted to do was we wanted to find out from the staff what is currently being used and what the teachers thought about that. We had a lot of conversations with teachers about what they're using, what they like and what they don't like. We also did a more formal survey where we asked teachers about what they wanted to see in a reading program, what they thought was important.
And upon receiving, some of them, we did like paper copies, some were email. And upon receiving that, we found out that majority of the grades were not really using all components of the program. So some were using some parts, some had just kind of disregarded and were just using what was working best for them. So and some of their reasons were that they felt the program was ineffective for the students they had. The students weren't engaged in what was going on. It wasn't really appropriate for their grade level. They had to supplement so many other things because it just wasn't enough. And then it was insufficient materials for the grammar and writing. And some of the expectations, the program we have now, I'm in pre-K now, but I was in kindergarten. And one of the things was, in the first week of kindergarten, the writing part was they were expected to write a complete sentence and eventually a paragraph. And I'm like, we're just happy if a kindergartner comes in and writes their first name. And it wasn't really practical. So we were just having to then be still pulling and choosing. So that was very helpful for us to see, okay, we're not using this program infidelity then. I think it's time that we, you know, investigate what is missing, what's important, and what is working.
So we went out and started to do some research. And, oh, sorry, I skipped a slide. Okay. So from our survey results and from our conversations, we learned what teachers really thought was important, what they really wanted to see.
Ms. Lee, can you come closer? Can you pull that mic down?
I'm sorry, I'm very short.
Just get it closer to you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, we don't want to miss some.
Okay, so, yeah, we found out what teachers really wanted to see in a reading program and the parts that they thought were the most important. Especially in the younger grades, they wanted a very strong phonics component because learning those letters and sounds is really that basic fundamental step in learning how to read. And we want hands-on materials, things that the kids can hold in their hands, things that they can use and manipulate because that's going to keep them engaged. Authentic literature, books that they're going to find out in the world, stories that are interesting to hold their attention and to really make that connection that reading isn't just about, you know, let's do this in school. But reading is about enjoying the literature. And that, you know, is one of the reasons that we learn to read is, you know, to go out and to read more. So in the upper grades especially, there was recommendations that we find something that used more nonfiction because that is a focus of the SOLs. And particularly made connections to the science and social studies topics. And we definitely wanted to find a program that was going to meet all of our needs across the language arts spectrum from phonics to comprehension to grammar to writing and everything in between.
So after we found out what was needed and what our teachers were wanting in a new program, we kind of started our researching. So we, of course, went to, you know, online to find just different, like what really things were being used. And you can find us a plethora of information on there. And then we talked to other teachers. We kind of made connections with other teachers. What are you using? What works? What are the benefits? What are your recommendations? We also went to the DOE website to see what their listing of approved reading programs were and information about what had been used. And we also reviewed online materials. And we kind of then passed that information on to the staff as well.
So after the research portion, we narrowed it down to our top five choices, programs that we wanted to learn more about. And you can see the list up here. Three of the programs are currently on the Virginia DOE-approved list. The Journeys, Superkids, and Reading Street are all already approved in the state of Virginia. The Reading Wonders and the Reach for Reading were ones that were compelling programs but would need to go through extra processes for us to adopt.
Okay, once we kind of narrowed those down to the five choices, we formed a committee. So we sent an email out to our staff and just said, anyone who is interested, you can join the committee. We're going to just be looking at materials, getting information. And we really wanted teachers' input because if everyone's not on board, then it's not going to make a difference what program we have if everyone is not willing to kind of sell into it 100%. So we definitely wanted, because we're not just the only ones that are going to teach reading. It's a whole village. So on our committee, there's reading teachers, administration, reading specialists. So we were able to contact the companies. They sent, some just sent samples for certain grades. Most of them sent the K-5. Do we have, do we have any sixth grade?
The Reach for Reading.
Reach for Reading did a sixth grade component. And then we also were able to get presentations from the companies to come after school and do like an hour presentation for any staff who wanted to come and be a part. And then we were also able, some of us went to observe at Yow Elementary School for the Reading Street program, just so we could see it in action and speak with their teachers there who had been using it and also the principal and what her feelings were about that.
All right, so after taking a closer look at the programs, our next step was to narrow it down and see if there were any we were no longer interested in looking at. We did eliminate the Superkids because it was only a K to two program. And we wanted something that's going to follow the students throughout the elementary school. And we also eliminated Journeys. We didn't feel like it was going to meet the needs and what we were looking for in a program. So currently, we're down to our top three choices. They are Reading Street, Reach for Reading, and Reading Wonders. We have been able to obtain quotes for two of those companies at this point. We're still working on the third. And have started the process of inviting parent input on our professional development day last week. We set aside a couple hours when parents were able to come in and look at some of the samples and talk to us. We only had a couple of parents show up then. We had another night scheduled, actually, last night. But due to the weather, we are going to have to reschedule that one.
What's the time for the night?
We set up a four to five and a six to seven session so that parents had options of when to come in.
So we are going to reschedule. We just...
Yeah, we haven't gotten to it yet.
So that, I guess this is the last slide, that we are going to reschedule because I think parents were very appreciative, that their voice was important. And so I think that was definitely a positive thing. So we definitely want to reschedule. And then once we kind of get the final quote in from the third one we're waiting for and another training to come in, we're waiting to hear back from them. Once we do that, we will take a final vote with our staff to narrow it down to two choices. So when we present it to you for the next time, we will have had two choices with quotes and staff input as well on the final top two choices.
And it's our plan to make our recommendation to you next month?
Oh, she read it.
I will, I will.
She'll be a little busy.
You might be ordering some books, right?
Yes, I really enjoyed that presentation because I have a 17-month-old and I read to her when I was expecting. And then she loves books and she has her own little, like, in the living room, there's a little case and she will go to it. And you don't, you just think, oh, the kids are so little, how do they know? But she really does. And she'll come up with a book and she'll say, please, and she'll spend hours reading. So it is so true. So I appreciate that. And what a blessing to put hands and books in the children's hands that parents may not be able to do themselves or just know how. So that's the super thing.
Yeah. So do you have any other questions for us?
So you had mentioned that DOE, I mean, you have to seek DOE for... I guess the question I have is it seems like two of the titles that are in the narrowed-down selection are DOE Special Request.
Yes. Go ahead.
I'll take that one. The DOE Approval List is more of a list of vendors that they have gone through a process, not for procurement purposes, that's local. But it's already been through the cycle where you have the input curriculum development. People look at it and they vetted it. Our instructional people have said it's a lot more about vendors and money and things like that. So it's much more of a local decision. We have our own local adoption process anyway, which these ladies have been working through in the policy. So we'll meet all the criteria. So we have the option to adopt something, even if it's not on the state list. But we feel after we've gone through our own process that it meets the needs. We're completely at liberty to adopt that as long as we follow a procurement of our own, which they're obtaining two or three quotes from different companies and vetting it that way. So that will meet that need. But you talked about qualified teachers who stepped up to the plate to do this through an application. They're the teacher leaders we talked about at the beginning of the year. Tiffany is a licensed reading specialist and as well as our pre-K teacher. And Beth has finished her master's in technology and literacy. And she did some amazing actual research on using technology for reading in a first-grade classroom, which is pretty awesome. So they're super qualified, can make a much better recommendation than I can. So I trust their judgment and the process that they've gone through.
And your objective would be to choose one?
Yes.
And then our goal would be to try to purchase across fiscal boundary?
Yes, we'll see what it comes out to be and think of some creative ways. We may have textbook line money, maybe some end-of-year funds we can put toward that and what we're building in the textbook adoption line next year as we're building the budget. We take this into consideration.
We could build K-3, 4, 6.
Exactly. And we've done that in the past. We did that exact thing last time. We did K-5, 6, 12 differently, just so we could break that up.
Of these three, which do you think is the most vertical SOL?
Aligned.
I'm putting you on the spot. I don't want to... I mean, I assume they're all relatively close to the SOLs and the vertical instruction program.
Yes, sir. I just told Ms. Johnson, like, if we could take components to find them perfect from each one and just build our own, it'd be, you know, the perfect rule. But they are aligned behind each chapter. They're all aligned with SOLs. It breaks it down. Some are the Common Core, but it also gives you the SOL component. And so they are very, very thorough. So really, out of these top three, I mean, they do all align with the SOLs that we have to cover.
And the beauty of that is sometimes money is the consideration you have to take into play with any adoption. Sometimes some are the greatest thing you want to adopt, but it's just completely out of the ballpark of what we can afford in our budget, even if we tried. So that's why having multiple choices of, you know, any of these would work for us, you know, is so important because fiscal considerations are a very important consideration.
And which one did you witness at Yow?
The Reading Street.
Reading Street?
Yes.
Is there any place to go see the other two?
The Reach for Reading is not currently being used at any other schools in Virginia.
None in Virginia ever?
No. They are very interested in breaking into Virginia.
Where might they be?
Actually, throughout the country, all the other states that use Common Core.
Oh, okay.
The Wonders is being used, but not by any other schools that are in our general vicinity.
What's that mean?
It'd be a couple hours' drive.
A couple hours' drive. Might be worth a couple hours. Have a field trip. If you can go and see, if you can go to Charlotte's or let's say, go to Williamsburg and see one of these in action, it'd be worth a night to go and see one of these things in action and everything.
Yeah, I did get a few names of schools from the representative for Reading Wonders that are using it. So we can look into that. And Mrs. Johnson is handing out, we had made one-page descriptions of each of the programs for the parents, kind of condensing it down in a more easy-to-digest format. So we thought we'd bring those along and let you all look at them today.
Which one do you lean towards? Which one do you think is the most beneficial?
You're putting her on the spot. You got two and a half kids, I mean...
Like I said earlier, all of them have good components because you're not going to find one that is going to meet every need. Now, for the younger, because I was a primary teacher, like K, now pre-K, the Reading Street is nice because it is a super-strong phonics program. But then, as you go up to first, second, third, fourth grade, the needs are different. So it's very hard, like, a little kid version would maybe be different than like our upper grades. They really like the Reach for Reading because of the science and socialized components and the literature that's offered. So it's very hard, like I said, if we could just take the meals of each one, it is hard to really say. That's why we're kind of getting everybody's opinions. We can go to the one that's most suitable in the general scheme.
And is it dictated to us that we must have one and not some hybrid answer to the thing? Can you hear me?
Can we...
Can it not be implemented as some type of hybrid?
Mr. Temple had indicated to us that if there was something that was better for, say, K through three, to go ahead and take that one for K through three and if there's a better program for the upper grades, that we can split it that way. So that is an option.
So yeah, so make those quotes flexible enough to implement your plan.
The thing you lose there is the consistency, I think.
Yeah.
You really lose consistency when you go from one adoption to a different adoption.
Yeah, and, you know, that's...
And you've got vocabulary differences all over the place with each one of the three, I'm certain.
Yeah.
If one program is going to give the base foundation that we just saw is so important, be it Kevin, why wouldn't we reinforce that here, build on that? And then if you have that super Montague child, then you can more easily advance once you get to second, third, fourth grade because you've already got that base built in versus struggling all the way through, no matter what. Just my thought. Anything else?
So you're going to advertise when the next parent meeting is?
Yes, sir. We sent out a letter last time and then we also had it on the school webpage. So once we kind of look at calendars and what's going on, we're going to try to have it within the next...
We're hoping within the next week and a half.
Week and a half or so.
Oh, good, okay.
And just having parent meetings... Of course.
Of course, yes, yes.
It makes a difference just having the parent meetings. I think people know that even if people haven't shown up, it might not show up as much. Just the fact that you do it makes a big difference.
Yeah, opportunity is there.
Giving ownership to everybody.
And the parents, they also had a little sheet that they could fill out of what they, their top choices were, and they could even comment. So we are keeping, you know, a good documentation of that as well.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Just to make it a little bit more convoluted than what it is, a lot of the school divisions in Northern Virginia right now are training their staff in the Orton-Gillingham Reading Program, which has been highly recommended for students with dyslexia. But rather than focusing on a reading series, they're looking at reading methodology, which is where they're putting their reading dollars right now rather than putting it all into a reading series. So that's another thing, you know, to consider as we're looking at these big series and we want this strong foundation for our children. But, you know, do we want to go all the way with the reading series or do we want to keep the door open for some of these strategies that seem to be helping students succeed? So just to muddy the waters a little bit more.
Thanks, Carol. That's great. Thank you all for that work. Appreciate that. Hey, I was going to tell Kevin, Kevin, you know, I read to one of my children while she was in the womb. And I just want you to know, so you've got a plan here, it's starting early, but I decided I was going to try to start even earlier than that. I was reading physics. It was a physics class. I was asking for the physics and I read to this child. Yeah, ended up being a teacher about that.
Oh.
All right.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a RAP Trails update. So I'd like to invite Jane Whitfield to the podium just to give you an update on the status of the RAP Trails project.
Hi, thanks for having me. I have a little cold, so forgive me. And I apologize for not having you.
not having a par point for you, we got called to New York for a funeral unexpectedly, so I just got back late last night, but I'd be happy to make these comments available to you in written form, if that would be helpful, if you'd like to see them. So, first, I want to thank you all, Shannon, and everyone, for your support of the school's Connector Trail Project. Certainly, the project has not been without controversy, which, you know, is expected and very common in neighboring communities and all throughout the country for trail projects, you know, they raise a lot of questions for community members, and we've tried to take that very seriously in answering, to the best of our ability, RAP Trails as a community support group, some of the concerns that community members have had. I want to let you know that we take it very seriously as a group when we're talking about or responding to community members' concerns, that that's something that we really try to take very seriously, and answer to the best of our ability, or get answers if we don't have the answers that people are asking for, and I do get emails and questions that are separate from the RAPnet conversation, and we do our best to answer those questions, and would do the same for any of you, should you have questions, or if parents or anybody else bring issues to you, please, you know, use us as a resource to help you get the answers that you might need. I wanted to give you a few specific updates, as I think you all know, the county did submit a VDOT TAP grant application in November, that's a public document, it was on the most recent supportive supervisors board docs, and then we have it, if anybody would like to see it, you can also access that, anyone in the public can access that through the VDOT website, but we'd be happy to provide it to anybody who'd like to have it. The budget for the 1.2 mile connector, wait for it, is $1,022,339. That does, I'll remind you, include a 30% construction buffer, so we added about $160,000 onto the budget, just to be on the safe side, in case of budget overruns or unexpected costs. It also includes funding for construction management and to utilize the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission as the project manager, because the county really doesn't have the staff to do that, and that's a service that they offer, and because they're a county agency, county-related agency, we don't, or the county won't have to put it out to bid, so we're able to just, you know, create a relationship with them, so that includes those, also includes those additional administrative-type funds. For that, you'll recall that RAP Trails committed to raising the match for the county, the county is required to have a 20% match on the VDOT grant, that came to $203,968. We also added to that an additional $2,500, we did that because you get extra points, a lot of extra points in the application if you surpass the match, and we had a donor who was willing to help us meet that challenge. So, there was $206,468 needed in order to meet the match requirements, and I'm really happy to say that we have raised $207,500, surpassing the amount of money required. That's $155,000 in committed grants, $150,000 from the PATH Foundation, and $5,000 from the LIHS Fund, $46,000 in cash, that we right now have cash in the bank that we'll be able to transfer to the county to help with cash flow when the contract gets awarded, and $6,500 in pledges that we fully expect to be met prior to the award of the grant. So, we're really excited about that, and it just shows, I think, the fact that we were able to raise more than $50,000 in cash in less than four months, shows the commitment of large numbers of the community to the project. Excuse me, the grant award will be made in, the initial award will be made in March or April, when they come out with their initial list, and then it would become official in June, again, to the county, the county would enter into contract negotiations in July, and it would be, the grant start date would be in August. The project timeline has the project beginning in February 2019, so we've told them through the grant application that it would be, we'd need a six-month ramp-up time to get everything all ready to go, and then there would be a one-year planning and engineering phase, and then an 18-month construction phase. So, I think we talked about this last year when I was here, this is not a fast process, it's possible that it could go faster than this, but it's unlikely, but it is what it is, and it's the first step of something that could, you know, really be special, both for the schools and the school community, but for the greater community as well. Between now and the award date, there are a few things that we're hoping to accomplish, and Steph's going to help me if I forget anything. I had a chance to chat with Shannon, and we are hoping to do perhaps some surveys or outreach to the school community and to the Commit to Be Fit community, to gather data on general support for the trail, how people might use the trail for both themselves and their children, and identify any concerns that can be addressed, or should be thought through before entering into the contract and proceeding with the, excuse me, proceeding with the project, and I'm excited about doing that. We've, all along, from the RAP Trails perspective, thought of this as a partnership opportunity, it's a great public-private partnership, and this will be the next phase to really solidify that school-community partnership. We also would like to hold a community meeting and a walk of the trail path, so we had a community meeting last September, where we had 70 people show up on a Wednesday night at Headmasters, which was really pretty impressive, and so we'd like to have another community meeting, and then also schedule a walk of the path. I think we'll do our own, we, so we have walked the path, we'll walk it again, and then we'll invite community members to do that. We also need to develop an MOU with the county, outlining our mutual commitments to the project and the process for RAP Trails transferring funds to the county. We are in the process of raising $50,000 in commitments for a maintenance and upkeep fund, y'all recall that that was one of our additional commitments to the county and to the project, that we would raise up to $50,000, and that would be an estimated about 10 years' worth of maintenance. We already have about $20,000 in verbal commitments to that, none of that money will come, be given to us or come through until the contract's actually awarded, because it's very specific to an actually-built trail. And then we need to raise additional funds for enhancements such as benches and fencing and signs, you know, we've all talked together about parts we'd like to fence, we've got donors who'd like to put benches with people's names on them, that's another, you know, at least $50,000, perhaps $100,000, but again, those two components don't really make sense unless we get the grant, you know, as a team, and the county signs off on it, and we're moving forward. Excuse me. We also need to develop a maintenance plan, and this is something that we'd like to consider, we'd like to ask the school board and the schools to consider whether or not there's a way that we might be able to use maintenance crew, the maintenance crew from the schools, that could be paid for, but we're looking for options, this is just an idea, but we're really looking for options about, who is actually going to cut the grass, or, you know, who's actually going to do that work, and so this is something, again, that we'll be talking about over time, but I want to, you know, at great risk of doing something off the cuff, throw that out as something we've discussed. We'll also put together that volunteer corps, we've already been reaching out to local groups and community groups, and we like to work with the schools and the community service program at the schools, to get those things really settled, and, you know, consistent with what we've been up to the past few months, and since we started this project now, a year and a half ago, you know, from the RAP Trails point of view, it's our goal to do as much of the work on the project as possible, so understanding that the county and the schools and others don't necessarily have the time and staff to put into that, but that in no way means that we don't want help in participation meetings, whatever, you know, makes sense, we're completely open to do, it's really that we're trying to, we're trying to take on as much work as possible to be able to present that information, funding and other things to you, but please don't hesitate to tell us that you'd like to be more involved, or that you'd like us to be more involved with you. The last thing I'd like to say is, you know, the big question is, you know, what if we don't get the grant? What if the county, what if the team, I've been criticized for saying "we," when I say "we," I think of us as a collective "we," but if the county does not get the grant? Couple things, one is, I think, I think the grant is going to be awarded, I've had many conversations with different, people at different levels in the grant-awarding process, and they are very excited about this grant, and I really do think we have a very strong chance of getting awarded. If it doesn't get awarded, we can apply again next year. So, it's every two years, and I was quoted internally last year as saying, if we didn't get to this time, I was never going to do it again, because of so much work. But now I'm on the other side, because it's been so much work that I'm not just going to let it die. So, the next grant application is not until fall of 2019, so it's really quite a ways, but, you know, by that time, we'll only be a year away, and that would just give us more time to raise more money and answer more of the concerns of the community, and see if we can't even get it tighter than we had before, so I think that would be our option there. And with that, I'll see if anybody has any questions.
Jane, when you were adding, so I was trying to add up all the times, so from today, based on your estimates, the trail wouldn't be in place for three?
Yeah, 2021.
2021?
Yes.
Three years. So, it's just good for us to kind of scope, you know, if things went well, that's what we should expect to the spring of 2021.
Yeah, that's right. And then the way the process works, if, you know, the county and the community decided to do any additional sections of the larger trail, it's really, as soon as this one gets going and the budget is set, and, you know, we're sure that we've got enough money for it, we immediately launch into the next section, whatever that would be, and in the case of this trail, what could happen is we could get awarded a less money, right? So, if they come back and award two-thirds of the request, you know, our challenge would be to shorten the trail, still within all of the parameters of VDOT, which is not that easy, but to redesign the trail within that budget, and then we would immediately reapply for whatever the remaining section would be, so it's just a kind of an ongoing process, section by section, budget by budget.
Thanks so much for sharing that.
Next up, in January and February months is usually when we adopt a school calendar for the following year, which takes quite a bit of work and meetings and surveys, so I'd like to have Assistant Superintendent Carol Johnson come walk us through that process and how that went.
Carol, you are a veteran of this process.
I am a veteran of this process, and, you know, another one of the advantages of being administrator, working with effective schools and strong and empowered teachers, is that they tend to begin to think creatively and innovatively and outside of the box, which brings us to our calendar proposal for this year. When we move into the calendar planning process, we usually begin with what we call our traditional calendar, and Rappahannock County Public Schools kind of led the charge a couple of years ago by creating the Super Calendar, you've heard of the Super Storm, well, we created the Super Calendar. The Super Calendar has 90 days in the first semester, 97 days in the second semester, with seven extra days built in for inclement weather. So, with that Super Calendar, we had to have an early start date, school usually begins around August the 10th, that gave us the potential for the end of the school year, by May the 22nd, on years when there wasn't any inclement weather, we could get out as early as May the 14th. We were able to maintain a nine-to-10 day winter break in that calendar, we did have teacher workdays at the beginning and the end of the year, a teacher workday at the beginning of second semester, and then three to four professional development days during the school year, so that's kind of like what the traditional Super Calendar looks like, and we've had several school divisions around us kind of model their calendars after that, Culpeper actually beat us in starting back to school this past year. So, if we move on to the next slide, what we're required to have in a school calendar by Virginia code and by our own school board policy, is a school term of 180 days or 990 hours. We're also required to make up the first five days that might be missed due to inclement weather, and then one day for each two days missed in excess of five days. That can be done by adding teaching days or by extending the length of the school day. A school day is required to be 5.5 hours, and that excludes our meals and the recess that students may have, and RCPS currently has 6.25 hours in a school day, which results in that ever-loved expression, bank time. So, this year, we gathered input from teachers, administrators, parents and support staff, and we came up with the following recommendations for a calendar for the 2018-19 school year. It was the consensus that we continued in for semester at winter break, that's been working extremely well for the high school staff, so we felt that was important to keep. Staff continue to want to have the 10-day winter break, to continue to finish early in May if we begin early in August. There was discussion about starting later due to the heat, and I don't think people have really thought about that too much in past years, because we have air conditioning now. Well, we don't have air conditioning in the buses, it doesn't work real well in the kitchens, so the heat still does become a factor when we start early in August. There was also the idea of adding more professional and workdays, maybe to try to have a professional day or workday monthly, and then teachers really seemed to enjoy having the full-day conferences, it gave us more time to meet with parents, and was a little bit less stressful than trying to do it on an early release day. So, those were some overall recommendations. So, we sent out to the staff, and we did this last week, and our weather didn't cooperate real well with us in our timing of sending out the survey, but we did send it out January the 3rd, we kept the survey open through the end of the day today, we had two calendars, one was Calendar A, and the other was Calendar B, Calendar A being the traditional calendar, Calendar B being what I finally refer to as the out-of-the-box calendar, and the responses, we had a total of 81, with 78 people voting for Calendar B, which was 96% of our staff. So, if you move on to the next slide, I have a comparison of the two calendars. Calendar A has a traditional early start date of August the 9th, Calendar B had a later start date of August 15. Calendar A had nine professional development days or workdays, in Calendar B, we were able to get 10 full professional development or workdays, along with two half-workdays. Calendar A had one and a half conference days, Calendar B had two full conference days. Calendar A had a nine-day winter break, Calendar B had a 10-day winter break. Calendar A had a guaranteed spring break, in Calendar B, there was the potential to lose three days of spring break. May 31 was the last day in both calendars. How do you make the difference in these calendars? Calendar A had seven built-in makeup days with the 97 days in the second semester. Calendar B used bank time for makeup days for up to 10 days. So, the semesters broke out in Calendar A with 90 and 97 days, Calendar B had 86 days in the first semester and 94 days in the second semester. The staff comments that we received on the survey, we had three comments referencing the hours of the... the hours of the conference days. Because the conference days had landed on a Friday, the questions just kind of related to how late in the day would the conferences be, what would the specific hours be? We had two comments in support of using bank time, two comments in support of the later start date, one comment supporting graduation being before Memorial Day. That was actually something we talked to our high school administration about, and that was the reason that we kept it after Memorial Day on the proposed calendars. We had one comment requesting more days off for staff for semester because it was such a long stretch from the start of school until we actually got to the Thanksgiving break. One comment requesting earlier date for parent-teacher conferences in the spring, and one comment suggesting that professional development days, the two days before Thanksgiving, be turned, or that those two days in that week be turned in professional days due to poor So in proposing a more out-of-the-box calendar, I did a little research with our neighboring counties, just to be sure that we weren't going out on the proverbial limb all by ourselves. Culpeper had five days added on to the end of their year, and then they added time to their school day. Warren had three built-in days. They did more of the traditional approach. They were making up each of the days that they missed due to inclement weather. Orange County used bank time with a makeup day on President's Day when they hit the sixth day out of school. Arlington had one additional day built in their calendar, and then they used bank time. Prince William County had three makeup days in February, spring break, and the end of the year. Falkir has two built-in. They make up two at the end of the year, and then once they hit the fifth day, they use bank time. Fairfax County used bank time for up to the first 14 days. So final thoughts, the recommendation of the staff is for Calendar B. By moving forward with this calendar, we acknowledge the expertise of our staff, that it is the quality of the time of instruction, not necessarily the quantity of days. Calendar B does have additional days built into the second semester when we are more likely to get the inclement weather. This could possibly increase student attendance at the start of the school year. We do have families out on vacation many times at the start of school, so the later start day could help with that. It does give us more time for parent involvement through the additional conference time. It has the additional time for professional development. And we did put in a makeup plan for days that are missed beyond 10 days. We're not required to do that, but instructionally, that, that seems to be sound. So, our recommendation was for Calendar B.
And that is an action item later.
So I'm ready to entertain your questions.
You're saying second semester has 94 additional days built in? That, that's gotta be a typo.
It has four, I'm sorry, it has four additional, it has four additional days built in.
We're going all year.
Yeah. I couldn't imagine teachers voting for that.
They don't want to come off.
Kids would probably vote for that.
Any questions?
So in essence, there are no built-in days to our calendar.
That is correct. Calendar B has exactly 180 days.
So then after 10 days, you said there are 10 days you can bank?
10 days that would use bank, and then we would make up days 11, 12, and 13. In the draft calendar, they're proposed to be made up during spring break.
What if, what if the inclement weather days come during first semester? That's always a problem. If it happens that way, and then you don't have enough semester days in that first semester to meet the requirements of semester classes.
Now, if that happens, which it possibly could, and it is a function of the board to adjust the calendar, so if the principals came to us and said, "We're instructionally in dire straits here because of first semester days, could you please ask that we have one extra day at Thanksgiving and another one during break," or however we might propose that to you, it could be changed at any time based on what happens. So that's, that's not a question.
Could we note that somewhere?
Sure.
And we do have a couple of days to play around with in the first semester. There's a teacher workday in October that, there's a day, it's for a Christmas break that could also.
You probably wouldn't know it by October.
Yeah, it would be in the last.
It'd be, it'd be that November, December.
Well, and sometimes we've had the flooding that's happened in September due to the hurricanes coming through, so it's typically not been a lot, but.
I remember when I was growing up, we, there was a period where we went to school on Saturday to try to make up time before the end of the semester.
It was.
Was it useless?
Nobody was there. It's another workday.
Ms. Meyer and I had the privilege of being in school the last time we did that in the county. We were told that was the last time it would be done.
Well, I mean, if our hands are tied, our hands are tied. If we run out of days, right, to meet a semester boundary, in that case, right, Mike?
Whenever you create a calendar more than, or ahead of time, I mean, we've thought of it every which way to Sunday each year that we do, and we've tried to plan for the worst-case scenario with the super calendar of 187 days. And there's no way, you know, that we can predict how things are gonna play out. So, you know, Calendar B is one that our staff feel like they can get the instruction in, in a quality manner.
There are no specific days second semester, other than bank time. And so, there's no, let's say you needed two days in second semester, you just continue going?
Take them out of spring break.
No, no, that's what they're not saying. That's what they're saying. They're, "Don't take them out of spring break."
No, they're taking them out of spring break.
Up to, up to three.
No, we use bank time, right?
After, after 10 missed days.
After 10 days off.
After the bank time, you use spring break.
Then we take them out of spring break, up to, up to three days.
Yep.
Because you are still within your number of hours that you need as required.
So there are some built-in days.
Yes.
Built-in hours, they.
Built-in hours.
The comment about the days before Thanksgiving being low-attendance days, is that something that could be worked, I mean, because that, that does happen, I mean, is that something that could work for the first semester?
If we wanted to take two days, I mean, I guess I would, looking at it realistically, if I was gonna add two days in November, I would probably take two days off of a December holiday break.
Okay, so.
And the staff seemed to prefer overall the 10 days of the holiday.
Yeah.
And I will say, I haven't seen any other school divisions that gave a whole week of work, but we go Thanksgiving, I think for Wednesday, I guess they're pretty nice.
Any other questions? Please, Carol?
All right, thanks.
Calendar expert Carol Johnson.
A lot of work.
Yeah, it does.
It's adorable.
Good night. Good to see you.
Okay, now me. The moment you've all been waiting for.
This thing.
Yay. We supplied a one-pager handout for everybody, too, they're up here, just to show the state numbers the way that they are with our new ADM and LCI calculations. So I'll go through what those mean for us in the local. It's not locked, it's not coming in. We need to hear. All right, so this is the report on the governor's proposed budget. This is not the new governor's proposed budget, but Governor McAuliffe, and what he's proposed. It does go to General Assembly tomorrow, so it's very much up in the air right now. So that's all I can really present on, is what it would look like if this proposed budget went through the way it is. So state revenues are comprised of several different components that we look at. The standards of quality calculations that fund certain specific areas about your, like, how many teachers you need per number of students in every grade level, how many principals, counselors. It has very specific criteria, and that's a funding staffing model we use to determine our staff. Incentive programs, categorical funding, and lottery-funded programs all go into the formula that you get for your state revenue. All right, so a big part of that calculation is local composite index, and I got that back, I guess in November, early December, that it had changed. So what the local composite index changed to, it went from a .42 to a .768, I believe, right Stacy?
Yes.
Right. So our local composite index went up, meaning that.
I'm sorry, what did it go to?
It went up. Yes, it did. Our local composite index for the biennium went up, meaning our, the local effort from the county.
We get less money is what it means.
It, it means we get less from the state.
From .42.
What did it go to?
.768.
768?
Yes.
It was at what?
.742.
742.
Yes.
10 years ago, it was .8.
Yes. So we've always hovered in, in that range. .742 is the lowest I've seen it be the whole time I've been here. So we've gone back up. So it has some implications, good and bad, that I'll talk to you about in this presentation. But a lot of that number is based on true value property here. Adjusted gross income and taxable retail sales all go into the calculation, and because of the wealth of our county and the real estate values that drives our LCI up. Although I recently got a census document about our school community demographic, and it's just despairingly different than what the, the county looks like. So this really hurts us because it's not really indicative of our true need in the school. So when you have values like that, we have 15% of our age group, 5 to 17, 15% in poverty. And that's the national definition of poverty, not free reduced lunch. Free reduced lunch, we're near 40%. So if you look at that demographic versus what the state thinks we have here, there is a huge disparity, and that's a challenge for us when we're advocating for our school budget. So that's something to think about, and that's how local composite index can really affect us.
Something to talk about.
It is, and we have wonderful person to help with some of these.
The problem is that that information is not widely known.
And it's not widely understood because it is a very convoluted formula they use, and, and how it trickles down into the funding that you get here. So we'll talk a little bit about that. There is a lot of information on the DOE website, on the school finance page, about these formulas and how they come about, also about legislators and who you can talk to to say, "Hey, I myself have just joined superintendents across the state of Virginia in a rural coalition because it really greatly affects rural divisions." So there are over, I think, 64 of us kind of coming together as rural school district superintendents to talk to our legislators, hopefully will have a better impact and say, "Hey, these are the issues that are hitting us policy, policy-wise." So we'll see how that's, brand new, see how that goes. All right, so for the numbers, and you should have the sheet, too, to go by. You can see the differences here in what we budgeted this year versus what's projected next year as the local impact. So scary numbers. We're going down quite a bit.
Oh, mine is.
Yeah.
Can I have a sheet just here?
Maybe there's some, some behind me.
It comes up on the page, so here's what I saw.
And my slides match it. I just took it section by section.
I just kind of would like it as a paper.
But yeah, a one-pager's nice for this. I might need, right? I need a one-pager, too. Okay, so the one-pager kind of shows, in SOQ, we took a very hard hit in our basic aid. You remember last year, and I'll talk about supplemental basic aid in a minute, that we hit a cap in our basic aid. Our LCI went down. So you didn't receive your supplemental aid that you had in the past, that's due to our agreement with Madison to share the LCI for the basic, the supplemental basic aid formula that you get. Luckily, we did keep that intact, even though the money went away, just in case it appears to come back, which it did because our LCI went up. So, phew, good thing we did that. So you'll see that difference in a minute, in a minute, but you can see in SOQ, we took a $292,000 deficit there. That's a lot in our little budget. So, incentive programs, you can see another, we gained some here, but this is what I want to talk to you about. This is concerning to me. Anytime I see in any budgets, and I've done a lot with federal programs and revenue sources, when I see no-loss funding, that's called the hold, the hold harmless clause, which means they're trying to soften the blow that's coming. Okay, so next year, you see a hold harmless, you see, I highlighted it on my slide where it says "no-loss funding." We didn't get that this year because they're, they're hitting us so hard, they're gonna give us a little pocket there of $161,000 for FY19 that will not be there FY20.
That's no way.
So think about that. We have to think in the foreseeable future for the next biennium of what that might look like without $161,000. So we don't want to set ourselves up being okay next year and then taking a really large.
Depends on the weather.
It does. And a lot of this is up in the air. The new governor could come in, and we have amendments to the budget, we don't know. But as it stands right now, that's what it looks like. So we get a little bit back in your incentive accounts, categorical, woo-hoo, we're up $465, every little bit, right?
Right, you check.
Now here, I highlighted supplemental basic aid. You did not get that because we hit the cap last year. This year, your LCI goes, goes up, so you don't hit the cap in your basic aid, so supplemental basic aid is back as long as we maintain the Madison agreement, which when it was signed into, as long as you're updating that along the way, it's good until 2025 to share that LCI. So you'll see that $114,000 there.
So is that 114 calculated in the negative 2, 92?
No, not yet.
Okay.
No. So that's added on. So we'll give you a total figure of what we're going into.
Blah.
So these are all the funds that we get for different categories, and lottery-funded programs support those. So your state revenue summary from the state, we're looking at total, all calculations included, minus $56,619. So when I first looked at the basic aid hit, I was panicking a little bit, I'm not gonna lie.
That's got the 161, fool you now.
Yeah.
Hit you next time.
Exactly. The, the no-loss is good for just next year's budget. So anytime you see no-loss, hold harmless, it means the following year won't, won't be there. That's legislative verbiage for that. So you, you have to watch out for those. Federal funding, that makes up another portion of our budget. Now, our federal funds run on different cycles, and that's why we have our November appropriations process the way it is. Our federal fund process doesn't align with the fiscal year calendar, so we have some grants that are 12, 15, 18, 24, 25, and 27 months. So depending on those grants and, and the, the cycle of the grants, we have to appropriate differently because we don't actually know when we're two or three years ahead of how those expenditures are gonna run. A lot of it's based on need of students. Great example, special education, those are local decisions based on need and expert opinions, then you have the services, and then you provide them. So really, a school budget is never final, ever, until the very end, and then it's still not even final because you're running cycles of your grants. So that's why end of year, your revenues are still coming in from the state reimbursements that you've been running through in your federal funds. So even up until June 30th, when you sign up, here's what we have left right now, you're gonna need to do something that next week anyway, because it continues to revolve. So actual funding is on approval of grants, and we get revised allocations all the time from the federal government based on new legislation or unused allocations. So we're always getting superintendent's memos, "Oh, adjust your Title I funds $20,000." It went down this much, or went up. So it's never accurate. It is a moving target. So federal funds FY19 projections, we're looking at taking a hit of about $7,000. So our federal funds surprisingly didn't take too much of a hit in, across the programs. Which gives us the projected revenue summary here. There's still a lot of to be determined. We don't know what the county is gonna contribute, we don't know what we're going to ask for. We have a work session next week to go over priorities, what we've realized this year in savings, what we're looking at. We have quite a few needs that we'll, we'll talk about in our work session. But this is your, your summary for the change in difference. So it works out to be, we're going, we're starting in the hole a little bit with our revenue. revenue, so we're 63,776 in the hole based on our state and federal funds. So we have to keep that in mind going forward, and that no loss really concerns me because that's a lot of money for our little budget, 161,000 coming from outside. So if that's there next year, great, but then what's the impact the following year? So we have to keep that in the forefront of our minds as we're building this budget. Other variables that will affect our budget planning, health insurance increase, we don't know that until about March when we're about done. So we have our best guess, and we talk to our provider and just see what it is, we usually are in the 10 to 15% increase. What we budget for, if we realize savings, they're great, if not, sorry, but it is a process that's all projection, so we'll look at that. New governor's input, Stacy and I are going to Richmond tomorrow and Thursday, we're going to hear from the governor, and it's a vast, vast vote conference, and see what we can get out of the legislators about what the new governor's thinking, is there going to be any modifications to this, any new legislation, what the General Assembly thinks. We'll get a lot more information over the next couple of days about that. Staff intent to return, those forms are going out by the end of the month, so we want to know, it's a very important variable, we have a veteran staff, you know, we need to know if a lot of the veteran staff are thinking of retirement, if not, who intends to return, what are the aspirations of our staff? We do have quite a few in master's programs that want to excel and climb the ladder, so what's available, that's all important variables that we'll put together. Actual allocations, I talked about that, they're always changing, so as actual as we can get at that point in time, is what I'll say to that. ADM and enrollment, this is a big factor, and it's one of the most misunderstood factors in budget planning, so average daily membership versus actual enrollment. It's confused all the time, and it's such a big part of what we do. ADM is what our state and federal revenue is based on, enrollment is what we have to serve, enrollment's actual bodies in the building, and there's about a 50 student gap in that because the state funding doesn't consider head start or preschool or preschool special ed in that calculation at all, but we still have to serve them. So you're talking staff and cafeteria, exploratory, building, heat, all of that stuff, that's still an expenditure, but it's not calculated in there. So when people say, well, your ADM is so low, well, our enrollment is still what it was before, and I've seen different superintendents do it differently, where they base the budget on enrollment instead of ADM, but ADM is the accurate picture of what you're-
The money you get.
The money you get. So I've seen it different ways.
If you go in enrollment, you're burned.
Yeah.
Yeah. I quite have to do with what you get.
But it's an important consideration, and the public schools are the investment of the community, so, but they do need to understand that difference, it is important. Budget priorities that we've already identified as an administrative team, and I did talk to all teachers and met with the grade levels at both schools to hear their thoughts too, and I'll bring some of those to the work session as well. But safety, of course, remains our number one priority. Profile of a graduate, that's the direction K-12 education is going in Virginia, we've talked a lot about that, built our comprehensive plan around that, and we're doing quite a few creative things this year to try to meet those mandates, but it's, it has a large budgetary impact. I know the Virginia Association of School Superintendents is putting together an advocacy program for actual dollar amounts that that will cost regular school division because it's pretty immense when you think about it. Maintaining high-quality staff remains extremely important, we are a high-performing school, we want to stay that way, and it's because of the wonderful staff we have. So maintaining benefits and the salary scales we have, love to give a raise if we can and work that out. Reduction in class size in reading in K to 2, this is something we've been talking about for a long time, and the SOQ formula does not recognize best practice, it's just numbers. So my teachers will agree that that's of major importance, if we can decrease class size and if I can get an extra body or two in primary, they would be ecstatic to help get those class sizes lower, and we can do a lot more with our reading program, so if I need extra staff, I really want to focus there. Reading textbook adoption, very important, reading is a theme, and it's one of our weaker areas identified in our comprehensive plan, and in our scores, we excel in every other area, but the reading is lower than we should be. And that shows me we have awesome thinkers that can excel in the subject matter, but not as great readers too, so we want to mitigate that gap, it should all be level there. And then we have quite a few facilities needs as the weather has shown us. Now, facilities we can take care of, I think we're in a great position to take care of a lot of the issues that we've had, a lot of them are mandate fixes, but when our debt service does come up in a couple of years, we may want to think about putting together capital improvement plan and going for another bond to get these facilities where they need to be, because they are older, they are aging, and they need quite a bit, so that's definitely on the horizon. So that's in a nutshell what we're looking at to start with, so do you have any questions about?
I guess next Tuesday, that's next Tuesday.
It is, next week we have a work session.
So next Tuesday at a work session, if there's a board member that has something, some priority in particular, it'd be good to get you some information before that meeting just so we're prepared to discuss it.
Absolutely.
If you have any ideas or anything to think.
If there's anything in particular you want us to bring to that meeting or any questions here that you'd like us to bring?
A lot of things require research-
They do.
-that are, you know, we don't want to just spring, of course, we have a little time, but-
It's an interesting scenario we're in, so.
Right. It almost makes me think, you know, we need to, while we're funded annually, we need to be thinking probably at least a two-year plan since you saw that number pop up, and you know it's not going to be there, so.
There are some counties that do biennial budgets, school budgets, but at least having that in mind, I wouldn't put that on my list personally, but just thinking that far ahead is super important, especially when they put in a hold harmless, I haven't seen one that just went away, so.
Or you can get burned with that too.
Yeah, oh yeah, you set yourself up for greatness in one year.
Look at fuck here, they just-
The LCI is valid for two years.
Two years, we're stuck with that LCI, that's not going away.
Two years.
Well, all I'd say is it used to be worse.
Yeah.
Well, I, if you need support with the Rural Coalition, maybe we ought to send a contingent down there to Richmond for that gang.
I don't want to be Debbie Downer on the whole thing, I would just say this, I've been through this before, we formed a coalition-
Yes.
-back in '02 or '03.
I don't know, backup, we did, we had done it.
And, because I was a part of it, and this LCI is very well-guarded.
It is.
And it's ominous, and nobody wants to deal with it. And basically, every time you go to say, adjust this thing, there's much larger districts with a lot of voting power that say, well, where do you think that's going to come from?
Exactly.
So every time we try to say, adjust the thing, it takes money out of somebody else's pocket, and so we typically are defeated, and, you know, if you want to carry the banner, I'd be proud of you, but don't expect that we're going to change this onerous thing.
I agree, but if we don't make noise every once in a while, they're, it's going to get worse in my-
Alright, so every 15 years we'll make noise.
Yeah, I think you have to make noise.
You have to, at least you have to.
Alright.
We're close to the same LCI as Fairfax and Arlington and all the big, big districts, and that makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
Well, and that's what the Rural Coalition is saying, but it's not just about LCI, there are a lot of other mandates that really affect rural districts very differently, not just LCI. We're not even that concerned with dealing with LCI because just like Mr. Mills said, that's a bigger fish than we think we can handle, and it's got way too much political support.
Well, you got broadband issues.
Oh, there's so many, so we're picking up those from a legislative advocacy standpoint, but also as a group together to get some resolutions through for the boards and talking to different agencies, so, and it's very new for superintendents to join that on their own, so we'll see how that goes.
Don't want to think out.
It's important for the county to know these three parameters that drive this equation.
Of course.
And that, I think, is a missing piece, we're not educating well the county on these three parameters and how it has an impact on the state contribution.
But I think that if we, I don't want to use the word heart, but if we emphasize the way money comes our way and how it is manipulated, and the county needs to understand that it is manipulated, the LCI is manipulated. I think people will have a better understanding of why it takes X number of dollars to educate a kid, or X number of dollars to run a school system. And I think our board of supervisors in the last couple of years have done a great job with addressing that issue. There's me.
Anyone else, any questions? It is what it is right now, it could change when Northam gets in and says what he's going to do, so we may get amendments, and that happens throughout, so we'll see.
Our ADM is shrinking annually. Revenues are low, property values are high, average income, very high. We don't look like we need any help.
Help.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, we don't look like we need any help, and that's why we're not, that's why our LCI, that's what it is, right? So just know that's our, that's our profile.
It is.
From Richmond's perspective.
If you look at the trends, we're slowly and surely dying out. What was the attendance 10 years ago when it was .8 versus what it is now?
It was-
Thousand kids.
Thousand.
County is slowly squeezing out younger families, whether it's intentional or not, that's the route it's going, the average age is increasing.
I don't have the source of this data point, so don't repeat this unless you go look it up, but there was some data point that showed how the difference between the highest and lowest salaries in our county was some remarkably high number as far as the United States of America is concerned.
Yeah, it was like 98% or something.
Yeah, so we're creating an environment that is not sustainable, not sustainable, that's it, and LCI is just reflecting that to us in a rural environment.
The LCI is going up, your taxes are going to go up because-
The good news is, you won't go past .8.
You can't go past .8, there's a count on that right now.
Good news.
Doesn't mean it's going to ever be.
That's true.
It's going to be hard decisions because the county isn't going to have the money to give.
Right.
It's going to have to change some practices and add new services, and it's not going to be there.
New income deals.
Something's got to give or where we're going.
New revenue approaches.
Well, and we're the largest part of the county's budget, so when you have that, you're the biggest target for the source.
I think we're going to be doing a lot of hunting and digging and budget cuts and looking, I don't see us expanding anytime in the next decade if it doesn't shift, the dynamic doesn't shift, because how do we justify it with less and less kids? You want the best for them, but the need's being pushed out.
That's the challenge.
Thanks, thanks for all that great news.
No problem.
Can't wait till Tuesday, next week.
It'll all be okay.
We will do the best we can with what we have.
Keep throwing water on the fire till the house is going.
That happens to you every day. Okay.
It's chipper than you think.
Alright, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Report of the headboard representative, you had that on the list?
I do have that. It was December was the last time, so we had a nice little get-together, thanks to Larry and his wife, and the after-school enrichment program presented the board members and the school board representatives with candy cane wreaths, which were really neat, and they took care of some businesses by setting up meetings for later in the year, and then they enjoyed the holiday. That was it.
MBGS?
We didn't meet, but we will be having a full-day retreat on the 19th, unless it snows, it'll be the week after that, but it's a full-day retreat to look at the next three to five years and see where we're going to go in number of kids, number of courses and so forth.
Great, great.
Just kind of a futures thing.
The next thing is this VSBA Code of Conduct, there's a sample that we were given, and I'm familiar with this type of document where we all sign it. Basically, we concur that we believe we won't behave ourselves this way, right? I'm not sure, did we do this last year?
I think so.
You remember?
Normally we do it.
Normally?
Every year, every year.
So we would need to adopt this tonight, vote on this and plan on signing it. I don't have a hard copy of any of those ones, so we would just pass it around the room and sign it on our way out, yeah? And we'll vote on that during action items. Is there any questions or comments? Alright, just behave, right? Okay, next.
Be nice.
Be nice, alright. The next is this policy, and can you comment on this? Shannon?
Sure, you asked us to look into the process about signing, physically signing the checks that pay the warrants, because it seemed very cumbersome, Ms. Johnson, bless her heart, really just loved to do it, and that's why it was never really an issue, she would come in with her favorite pen and sign all the checks, so then it just hit us, oh my gosh, who's going to do that? So we looked at the policy that drives that, because we had thought it was pretty prescriptive in that you would need a chair, vice chair of the school board to sign the warrants, which you do, however, you have this nice little resolution, DK resolution that's been approved, with this particular verbiage that says, this request, an authorization shall be deemed to be a warrant under this Virginia code when signed by these folks. So that is that cover sheet when you approve warrants, that you view the bills, that's why you ask somebody to review them and then you look at them, you do the authorization there. And the Virginia code says, as long as these people's signatures are on it, that is the warrant. So regardless of that part, it doesn't matter really who signs the checks, as long as they are authorized by the bank and with our auditors to make sure we do.
So in the future, if Mr. Grove stops by to review bills, and he signs such a thing as a cover sheet, we're going to fight shape.
Exactly, and we usually bring those to the school board meeting too, for you to sign if we need those, so that would authorize-
The bills getting paid.
The bills to get paid, and then it's just authorizing the checks to be made from the bank, and that doesn't, that's whoever we authorize.
And we're looking into a different approach to that too.
Yes, once we get past budget season, I'll look into doing EFT transfers. I can't necessarily do bill pay, I can't log on to the bank and pick what bills I want to pay because the auditors will freak out, because there's no set process in doing that, nobody to watch it.
Have you checked, checked with the auditors?
About bill pay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can use, the only reason I say that is because we've got a, at the firehouse, we're a 501(c)(3), and we have a pretty big budget, and we can still use, we can use bill pay.
I will double-check, I just don't think they're going to-
Okay, I'm-
They will do the EFT register, because that's something that comes right out of our system, out of our financial software. I just, it's just a matter of working with the businesses that we use the majority of the time to make sure that they can do transfers that way for payment, so, but I will, that'll probably be a summer project for me when things are a little-
Next step.
Yeah, that's another move.
Yes, moving in the right direction then.
Alright, and so we'll be approving this, or is that?
No, you don't need to do anything, your current policy-
It was a resolution.
Yes.
Yes, we're good, great, thanks for reviewing that.
No problem.
Alright, moving on to public comment, anybody want to speak to us, yes ma'am?
I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District, and actually, I'm just here to be a cheerleader. I was at the supervisor's meeting when Ms. Ginsley made her presentation, and I just thought it was terrific, and it made me feel like, you know, the school is going the right direction. I realize this is a bit self-serving, but since I'm on the wrapped trails committee, but the link between exercise and brain development, it is critical, and I was really glad that she brought that up. And just, you know, I also went- And just, you know, I also went down to the legislature in, what was it, 2004 or 2002 to lobbying on the LCI, and it was kind of a dead end. But the other thing I, this is probably not the body, but we do have a kind of regressive tax structure in this county where people with the smallest amount of property pay the greatest rate of taxes. It might be something that, at least for, in the interest of providing quality education, we might want to rethink some of that. Thank you. And thank you all for your service. I know it serves a lot.
Yeah, I think, you know, we need to thank the people that are serving. My goodness. My goodness. Yeah, thanks for speaking up. And, yeah, we are not a taxing body. Our job is, I think, we still have a role to educate regarding how it is that we are paying that. So if we have a role, I think we need to step up to the plate on that one and what that equation really means to us.
It's not hard to step up to the plate when you go to, you see a high school performance or kids learning to read and things happening in the schools. It's an easy plate to step up to.
Alright. Next. That's for you, I think.
Me?
I think so. Anybody else? Oh, so we're basically going to, at this point, start taking input for next, for the budget cycle. Is that what this is? And so if you have something budget-related that you would like to share, we are starting to have open ears. Anybody? Alright. Alright, I'm going to move on to action items. Already jumped the gun on 9.1. We did that one, we had a motion and previously, right?
Oh, yes.
I think I jumped the gun. 2.6. We already did that one. 9.2 is tabled in February. 9.3, is there a motion to adopt the 2018-19 School Calendar B as recommended by our Assistant Superintendent?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Uben, second from Mr. Grove. Any discussion? Thanks for pulling that together again. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so moved. Is there a motion that we adopt the VSB code of contact that was in our, attached to our agenda today?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Bynum, second Mr. Uben. Any discussion? Well, I should hope not. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? We'll sign that before we leave tonight, before you leave the room. Everyone's statement of economic interest is due to our clerk. If you haven't done that already, our deadline is?
I think I have it on February 1st.
February 1st. So if you haven't done that, you can pull it out, do it. There's a monetary penalty for not doing it on time. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is February the 13th at 6:30 p.m. Our work session is January 16th, 6:30. That's at the school board office?
It is.
At school board office. At this time, we're going to move into closed session. We'll come out of that in 15 minutes, 20 minutes? It looked really short.
It's very short. Five minutes.
Within five minutes, and we will then certify and have any motions related to that and adjourn. So at this time, who has the, do we have it in writing, our...
Well, Larry's got to read it.
Oh, Larry's got it?
No, I don't have it.
You don't have it?
Oh, I'm prepared for the position. Should have that memorized by now. Look in the December minutes on the home line. It should be listed right there. It's in the minutes from December, correct? Probably. I'm almost positive. I saw it when I looked at it.
It's in the last six minutes. Although, although I'm about to read it.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the number.
Class, do you want to use my copy? Who's going to read it?
Larry, anybody?
Larry, can you see this right here?
You found it?
Found it.
Same. Moving forward.
Now, when you read that, we're only going to do personnel. So don't say, don't say people personnel.
Not people personnel.
Right. We're only going personnel.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Alright, the motion is, I move that the board convenes a closed session for the following purposes: to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified positions and discussion of superintendent evaluation pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A1NII.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed session. And so we'll read this.